Mr. Chairman, we're on the air. We're on the air.
The May 10 meeting of the Long Hill Planning Board is called to order at 7:38. Can we have the announcements, please?
Yes. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter passed 10:30 p.m. at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt in proceedings. Pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Committee man Ray.
Present.
Sorry, it was my fault.
Committee man Velezha.
Present.
Ms. Dill is absent this evening. Mr. Hands is absent this evening. Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File?
Here.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay, but we wanted to make sure as many members as possible were sitting here ready for this hearing. We're talking about a minor subdivision, application number 22-1 Papa on Old Forge Road. Mr. Zelli? Why don't you have a seat? You know how this works.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals, Frederick Zelli, Bisaglia Florenzelli, on behalf of the applicant. Would you mind if I be seated because I think this microphone will work better if I do?
For the record, Deborah, would you call the role of our advisors, please?
I'm sorry?
Would you call the role of our professionals, please?
Absolutely.
Just for the record, so that we all know that they're here.
Very good. Board attorney Amanda Wolf.
Here.
Board engineer Samantha Anello.
Here.
Board planner Elizabeth Lanning.
Here.
Sorry, Mr. Zelli, go ahead.
For the record, this is regarding 57 Old Forge Road. It's your block 12604, lot 1, located in the R2 zone. It's an application for a minor subdivision, just one lot into two, with a bulk variance for lot width. We are also seeking a vacation of a prior subdivision approval condition, which was to require installation of a two-car garage on the, what's the remainder lot for purpose of this application, what'll be remainder lot 1. There are two existing nonconformities relating to lot 1, front yard setback and side yard setback of the existing home, which is actually situated behind lot 1.01, which explains the front yard setback. This dates back to an application for the original subdivision of lot 1.01, which was back in 1993 in front of this building. The reason for the lot width variance is we are proposing this to be a flag lot in design. That's not specifically countenanced by your ordinance, which is one of the reasons we need the variance. If you had a separate flag lot ordinance, we might not, depending on what the requirements for the staff would be. But in the absence of that, we have a staff width as opposed to a lot width, and that gives the need for the variance. Going back, the original reason for that, we did have a pre-application meeting with Mr. Sandow and a few others, and there was some discussion of taking the lot off of Dogwood. Technically, then, you would have a conforming lot in terms of a traditional front yard. As you know, though, Dogwood is a paper street, and there's a significant amount of wetlands back in that area, as Mr. Fantina, our engineer, will explain. So at the meeting, everybody seemed to be on the same page that it would make more sense to design it the way we have and to seek the variance instead of going through that route. As I said, back in 93, when the subdivision, the original subdivision was done, although at the time it was grandfathered that there would not have to be a two-car garage that your present ordinance requires, the board did impose as a condition that one be constructed after that owner would no longer own the property. So now that my clients have purchased it, technically, we were required to have that done. This board did extend the timeframe for that. We have admittedly cast it, but at this point, what we're requesting, if the board is not overly concerned with the issue, is to not have to have that condition. We ask for modification of that condition to remove it. Honestly, the property has functioned all these years without a garage, and if we were to add one, it would really not serve much of a purpose. Your ordinance is primarily designed to presumably keep too many vehicles from being visible from the street and from neighbors. Given the location of this house, it's so far from the street, it's not really a concern for this particular lot. And additionally, by putting a two-car garage onto that lot, we'd be increasing impervious coverage, which, of course, is something we all try to strive to avoid. So those are really the original two forms of relief that we had in our application. Your engineer and planner have raised the possibility of two others. I say possibility. When our engineer testifies, he's going to show a modification to the plan that we believe will eliminate the need for those, but we'll bring that out through testimony. With regard to the positive and negative, I'll deal with that at the end of the proceedings. I have two witnesses here with me this evening. Saraj Nankar, who is actually technically the brother of the owner, Swatno Nankar, but Raj and his partner would be the ones developing the tract if, in fact, this is granted. Our primary witness will be David Fantina, who's our engineer. It's my intention only to elicit direct testimony from Mr. Fantina, but if there are questions from the board that would be more appropriate for an owner to answer or an owner's representative, Mr. Nankar is here to be able to field those kinds of questions. And what I would ask, if it's acceptable to Ms. Wolf, if both witnesses could be sworn in at once in case we need to go back and forth a little bit.
Sure, as well as our board professionals, if you could all raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. And then as you testify, Mr. Zelli will qualify you or give me your background information.
Mr. Fantina, I'm going to keep you standing if you don't mind.
Okay.
Mr. Fantina, would you like Mr. Nankar to help you with plans or something?
Uh, yeah, I probably should just qualify myself first.
We're going to do that for sure. I just wanted to set logistics first.
Yeah, unfortunately, with COVID, either misplaced, forgot, or lost my easel, so my client here is going to have to take the place, unfortunately. Too many Zoom meetings the last two years.
If you would, please give the board the benefit of your educational professional background.
Yes, I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since 1987. I'm the owner of Fantina Engineering in Bernisville, New Jersey. I've been the proprietor of Fantina since 2001. I routinely appear before boards around the state. I've appeared before the Board of Adjustment in this township several times. Don't think I've ever appeared before the planning board, but I do routinely appear before boards around the state, and my professional license is in good standing.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would ask that Mr. Fantina be accepted as an expert in the field of professional engineering.
Say that again.
I would request that Mr. Fantina be accepted as an expert in the field of professional engineering.
Any objections?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Fantina, did you do the engineering plans for this particular application?
I did, yes.
Would you start by taking us through the property as it exists now?
Yes, as the board may be familiar with, this property is a large property in the zone. The zoning only requires 45,000 square feet, but this is a five-acre piece of property with an existing house on it, and the house is presently accessed via an easement through adjoining lot 1.01. Almost the entire driveway is actually on lot 1.01. There's a house, which is in a non-conforming location on this property. A good portion of the property is actually encumbered by wetlands and wetland transition areas, but there is a significant portion towards Old Forge Road, which is developable.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just for the record, are these the same plans that were submitted with the application materials?
This particular, these are, I will be showing an exhibit, but these are, this is sheet two of the plans that was, that were submitted.
And if you would, show us a little bit, show us what critical areas exist, both steep slopes, wetlands, etc.
Yeah, the steep slopes are hatched. North is straight up in this, so in the westerly portion of proposed lot 1.02. And then it's hard to see from this distance, but I'll trace the wetlands with my finger. And a significant portion of the northeast corner of the property is encumbered by wetlands. The applicant did receive an LOI from the DEP showing that those are indeed the wetland locations, and a 50-foot wetland transition area has been assigned to them.
Do we have any stayed-up-in waters on the property?
There is a very small swale down in this area. Your engineer has requested that we make a statement regarding the riparian buffers. I spoke to an environmental consultant about that. He said that the riparian buffer would be 150 feet at the maximum, and if you draw 150-foot line from the edge of, or edge of bank, it does not come out as far.
... of the wetland transition area, so it's subsumed by wetlands and transition areas. Your mic just went off somehow.
Already?
I'll talk loudly. Did that be okay?
Yeah, you can talk loudly while I switch out the batteries.
Take that microphone in front of Mr. Zelli.
Do I do that and switch?
That should, I think that's got a long cord on it. And you can have the other one.
Okay. Would you show us where the steep slopes are on the property?
Yeah, the steep slopes, as I indicated, are in the northwest corner. Thanks, Deborah, I've got this other one now, but...
Keep switching them.
Yeah, in the northwest corner, and they're hatched.
All right, and our original plan, since you're looking at the original plan, were we going to encumber, touch upon any of those steep slopes?
Yeah, their driveway, the new driveway for the new dwelling on proposed lot 1.02 just barely cuts in front of the, or through a very small portion of these steep slopes.
And obviously, we're going to go through the reports later, but just, we'll touch on some of the substantive issues that were raised. So that was one. The other was that the house, as originally designed, does not satisfy the front yard setback for Dogwood, correct?
That's correct. Dogwood is actually a public road, even though it's unimproved and probably never will be improved because of the presence of the wetlands, at least on the eastern part of the property. However, technically, it is a, it is a public street, and as your professionals properly pointed out, we do need to maintain 75 feet setback from there, or else we need to request a variance. So we're only at 59 feet, and Raj, if we can switch to the last page here, now I'm going to, now I am going to be showing an exhibit that's not, that has not been submitted, yes?
Mark, this is A1, Ms. Wolf.
And this is entitled simply a sketch for the project, and it's dated today, sheet one of one. And this is very similar to what you just saw, except we've slid the house to the south so that now we are maintaining the 75 feet, so we're eliminating the front yard variance. It has the added benefit, and then it moves the driveway away from the steep slopes. I couldn't swear that we're not going to still be clipping the steep slopes very slightly with the grading, but it will, it will reduce it to an absolute minimum.
Now, can you take us through what's being proposed, the shape of the property, and tell the board the reason that we're proposing what's, in essence, a flag lot as opposed to taking it off of Dogwood? You've touched on that, but if you give us a little more detail.
Yes. Oddly, as you can see, this is a somewhat odd piece of property. It's a large L, and the two things that make it somewhat unusual are, A, the presence of the existing house, which is tucked into the corner here, and then the fact that we're encumbered by wetlands and a little bit by steep slopes, and the fact that Dogwood Terrace is not really accessible. So we did have a Zoom meeting with the chairman and some other members of the board, and the chairman reminded us 25 minutes ago that it was actually last summer, time flies.
Quite some time ago, yes.
Yeah, it was quite some time ago. We talked about different options, and we do have the option of coming in off Dogwood Terrace and eliminating this flag altogether, but it doesn't seem to be very realistic because what it does is just, it just cuts the backyard, if you will, of the new lot. It brings the driveway in kind of an awkward location, and then remember that the driveway would have to come out to Dogwood Terrace. Dogwood Terrace would then either have to be... Improved throughout this location, doesn't seem to be much point of that, since, as I said, it really couldn't be particularly true, or we'd have to...
See if you can get your microphone to work again, please.
Or we'd have to continue the driveway over the Dogwood Terrace frontage. So all things considered, we felt, and without putting words in the people from the board that were at that meeting, I think they felt that the best solution was what you're looking at now, which is a flag, quote-unquote, lot for the existing house and then the frontage lot fronting on Old Forge Road for the new house.
So from a bulk requirements perspective, then, what would we typically be required, and what are we providing in terms of frontage and lot width?
Well, the lot width that we're providing, 150 feet is what's required. We're only providing 25 feet on Old Forge Road. I mean, technically, we are providing several hundred feet on Dogwood Terrace, but it's not usable unless or until we get a DEP permit or the town gets one to improve Dogwood Terrace.
And to your knowledge, is there any flag lot ordinance in Long Hill Township that would govern?
There is not one.
Okay, thank you. We talked about critical areas. You showed us wetlands, open waters, and steep slopes. Are there any other kind of critical areas on this property?
No, the map, you see now, the exhibit actually shows, it has shaded both the wetlands and the wetland transition areas. It doesn't differentiate, both of them are shaded here.
Now, we're only here for subdivision approval. We're not seeking approval of any particular structure. Is there any, are there any other variances, to your knowledge, that would pertain just to the property as opposed to a structure down the road?
No, there are not.
In general, can you tell us what the stormwater management plan would look like?
Yes, and I will say that your engineer, Ms. Anello, has made some comments here. We take no exception to any of her comments. Most of those, all of those, I would say would be done at the time of grading permit application. Essentially, what we're going to be doing is, there's a significant amount of impervious coverage for the driveway and for the house. We're only showing the one driveway here that hits the house runoff. She has requested, I think reasonably, that much of the driveway be also be caught and dealt with, and that can easily be done because it's all slopes up towards the wetlands. There's ample room to do something with that. The exact, exact mechanism, we can work that out at the time of building permit application. I should say also that there is also an advantage, shaded in here and also on the plans that were submitted, is a significant amount of impervious coverage that's being reduced. And that would tend to minimize, increase in impervious coverage.
And of course, that's always a good thing, but just for the record, we are nowhere near approaching any impervious coverage limitations in this application, are we?
No, we are not.
Okay. Just to be clear, the flag lot and the driveway that would be on the staff only would service the remainder lot, lot 1, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you just show everybody where that is as opposed to where the driveway is for the conceptual home?
Yeah, they're close together. The flag lot is right here, the flag staff, if you will, the driveway is in the flag staff, which makes a right-hand turn to access to existing house, and they're right next to where you can...
And the right, next to it now is the new driveway to access the new house on the new lot.
Okay. And for the board's knowledge, the concept as required by the easement that's part of our package, due to the subdivision, we are required to remove the driveway easement from lot 1.01. Ms. James, who is the owner of that property, is here this evening. I suspect she may speak to you. But I'll represent to you, our intention is to immediately remove that as soon as there's a new driveway to replace it with, assuming this application will be granted. It would leave water utility and overhead electric utility in that same general location. It's our intention to work with Ms. James on that, to have some kind of formal easement in place, dealing with liability for those two utilities. But my understanding, even if the intent originally was to have the entire easement removed, my understanding, Ms. James can speak for herself, is that she's mostly concerned with the driveway, understandably. So it's our intention to work with her on that as opposed to having to move utilities that really don't interfere with her property. Other than that, I think we've covered just about everything that I want to undirect. Let's go through the reports, starting with Mott McDonald's report dated May 4th. Mr. Fantina, you've had an opportunity...
Before you go there, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
You're seeking a variance for the northern property line because you only got 25-foot of frontage, is that correct?
Right here.
Right.
Okay. But the flag lot with the current driveway only has a minimum amount of, of frontage also, right?
Well, no, actually, actually, right now, this lot as it exists has all of this frontage, but it's not being used.
Oh, okay. All right, got it. Thank you.
The, the backstory on the current driveway situation is that at one point in history, that existing house was the only house in the entire square. And back in the 90s, that lot 1.02 was carved off, and the driveway was continued, and there was an exception in that order, which is quoted by Mr. Zelli in the application. And part of the subdivision back in the 90s was that if the big lot were ever further subdivided, that driveway extension would go away. And this is the time, some 25 years later, when there is a further subdivision, and so that the existing driveway easement goes away, and a new driveway is created. So we are in part confirming and/or restricted by the decision of this board when it first subdivided back in the 90s.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I...
Any other questions, direct questions before we just go through the reports? Mr. Fantina, let's look at Mott McDonald's report, if you would.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Can you just show me where the utility is coming in off of Old Forge? I think I see it along that bottom line. There's two power poles.
Yeah, there's top power poles, and they come here. They're essentially in the driveway, right along the park.
On the right edge, going down the driveway? Okay.
Mr. Fantina, one of them is on 11, I'm sorry, 1.01, and the other is on lot 1, is that right? The two poles?
Is it two poles? I think there's three poles.
Are there? Okay.
Yeah. And is there, is that where the water's coming into, are the utility? All right, so it's all coming in from either under the middle of the driveway, or if I'm looking at the, on the, I guess that's the southern edge of the driveway. Right? The southern edge of the property. Okay. Okay, thank you.
If you would just take us through Mott McDonald's report.
Yeah.
How and as you see appropriate.
Some of these things I may have preempted. I tried to hit some of them directly from testimony. As far as the variances, I think we discussed those. And interrupt me if I, if I've glossed over something that you want to...
Just on that first point with the variances, you know, I can't see the exhibit exactly, but is the 75-foot setback measured from the property line, or is it measured from what would be the 50-foot right-of-way? That was, that was the concern that was, was brought up, was that per, I'm going to read it, you know, so the board, if you want to follow along, this is comment number one in the Mott McDonald's report. There's a section of the land use code 133.4, which states that where a lot has frontage on a street that does not provide the right-of-way width required by the township, in this case, it would be 50 feet minimum. It's only a 33-foot right-of-way. "All required area and yard requirements shall be measured from the proposed right-of-way line." Given that, I believe it, it might still be a variance request.
We're, so we're showing, that's a good point, and that, actually, I missed that, to tell you the truth. So we're showing from the property line the way it is. So in order to comply, we would actually need to move the house another eight and a half feet.
Yeah, eight and a half feet, exactly. Or request a setback variance.
I mean, we could move it eight and a half feet, but the drivers are getting pretty close to them. I think it might be better to request it. I mean, to be, to be 50 feet from the sideline.
Right.
Comply with the spirit of the ordinance, if you will, so I think we would request that variance.
It's technical in nature, and it's not going to change what, what you see physically on the plan here, but, you know, just so the board understands, the, the right-of-way width of Dogwood Terrace is only 33 feet, which by the town's code is not considered an adequate width. If you look on the other side of Dogwood Terrace where the road is improved, the roadway from curb to curb is 30, 30 feet wide, and it's actually a 60-foot right-of-way over there. So the town requirement that it be 50 feet, you know, should that road ever be developed in the future, the properties that are adjoining it might be required to make a dedication to widen it there. And I think that is the, that, that was why the ordinance was written this way, such that they wouldn't then create a setback variance for themselves in the future, should that ever happen, so.
Then I would certainly agree that we should request that variance for those reasons. Ms. Wolf, I believe our notice is adequate to cover that. Do you agree?
So just to state for the record what the variance request would be for...
It would be 75 feet off the existing property line.
So it's 75 feet required, we're gonna...
Minus eight and a half.
Minus eight and a half.
So 66 and a half.
Yeah, there you go. 66 and a half, where 75 feet is required. Again, not measured from the property line, in this case measured from a 50-foot right-of-way, which does not currently exist. Mr. Fantina, you can go back to the report.
Okay, thanks. The subdivision comments, the subdivision map is done by John Rithman, surveyor we're working with. We have no, no objection to any of this. I would just say, I believe these, these, if the board approves this, it'd probably be filed by deed, not by map.
Filed by deed, okay.
It would be, and I just wanted to be clarified, does that obviate that comment, then? If it's not going to be a map, or would you still be looking for something?
Some of the comments still stand, if, if, I believe the first...
Just number two is all those questions.
Just number two, so yes, if it's not being filed by map, if by deed, then that comment is, is not applicable. The rest, of course, would remain.
Environmental, I already discussed the wetlands and the riparian buffer.
Just a quick question related to that. Are there any areas within the shaded wetland and buffer area here that are also a steep slope? Did you happen to do that analysis in that area?
We did, we did.
We did, okay, great. Just wanted to check.
Okay, and I think that answers number nine as well. Number, number 10 through 13 have to do with the architectural plans, and there aren't no architectural plans. But I should at this point point out that your ordinance, and I'm sure the board is familiar with the ordinance, requires that height is calculated from the lowest point to the peak of the roof. So we is, we are going to request at this board height variance for this property up to 38 and a half to 35 feet is required. And essentially, if the board looks at this, it's, it's obvious by inspection that any typical house, this house is going to have a walkout basement where it's going to, the basement here is going to have at least seven feet of basement. So unless it's a one-story range house, a walkout range, people are building these days like this, has any kind of second floor, any kind of decent roof pitch, we're going to be exceeding 35 feet. Obviously, if we went over 38 and a half, it would be D variance, we're probably a different board. So we would request, because of the somewhat unique features, and I don't know how unique they are in this town, I've seen a lot, a lot of this in this town, but the somewhat unusual features, we are going to request a height variance.
And again, Ms. Wolf, I think we would be covered on that.
Pardon me?
Yeah, so I would be covered in the catch-all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Do you have an idea what this, how this structure is going to look like? The reason why I'm asking is because you're measuring 75 feet off the property line to a line on the northern edge of that building, and there's a bump out. And you're also talking about a walkout basement, which I've seen no plans for a structure, just an outline.
You're, you're right. We have, we have a plan in mind. There's no hard and fast plans. There are architectural plans for another project that the applicants are doing in this town. And we're going, they're going to be a similar building, but obviously, for this particular property, they would have to do, modify those plans and submit them.
For purposes of this application, the only issue that would come up that's building-oriented, so to speak, other than footprint, is the height, and that's why we're asking for that. And just asking for the maximum, which this board has the ability to grant, which would be 10% over 38.5. Otherwise, we're going to be subject to the permit requirements of the construction office. And of course, if they found something else, we'd either have to come back to you, or depending on what it might be, go to the Board of Adjustment, but we're not anticipating that at this time.
What's the pitch on the roof? Is it a 12-on-12 and 8-on-12? What's the pitch?
It's going to end up being whatever we can do and still accommodate the height that we're asking you to grant us.
Whether you ask for 38 or you don't get it, whether you get the variance or you don't get the variance, it's going to adjust to that.
Well, if, honestly, if we, if the variance is not granted, it's probably going to be impossible to build the house as a two-story, which is the intention, as Mr. Fantina indicated.
Even with a 4-on-12 roof or something, it would be very, very problematic.
Because of the, the slope.
Yeah, because of, because of the fact that you're measuring from the lowest point, and the lowest point is going to be, this, you know, nine to 10 feet.
That's the lowest point from exposed structure.
Correct, to the peak of the roof. Yeah.
Mr. Fantina, I have another question, and this is checking really quick in the code. You might have it noted on the plans. What's the maximum number of stories? We're talking about the distance.
Samantha, bring your mic closer.
Sorry. So we just checked, it's two and a half stories maximum.
That's correct.
The structure you're describing unfortunately sounds potentially like it could be greater than two and a half stories. If the walkout basement, more than 50% of it is exposed...
We're not expecting that, no.
Okay, because then you would be three and a half stories, because I'm assuming that the attic also, by code, a half-story has a seven and a half foot space that's less than 50% of the attic, which is most.
We're, we're expecting significantly less than 50% of this to be walkout elevation.
So do you not anticipate the, the need for a stories variance in addition to the height?
I don't.
Although it might be... If that should come up, you would have to come back before this board or the Board of Adjustment, so.
It's a fair point. It has been, I can represent, it's been interpreted by the Board of Adjustment that stories is a C variance based upon case law. So I think to be safe, we should amend our request to include both. And then that way, that just obviates the, the issue altogether, since this board does have that jurisdiction.
So you're asking for 38 and a half feet and how many?
Although this is a very interesting discussion, it's not relevant to this application, which does not seek permission to build the house.
If they're requesting a variance, it is, it is to remain to this application, absolutely.
Where is there a variance for height?
We, we've amended on the record this evening to request that height variance as a precaution, because it looks like it's inevitable. With regard to the story, it may or may not be, depending on definitions, but there's no harm in including that in the variance if it's granted, so we don't have to either jump to another board or come back before you lay it.
So again, to clarify, are you asking for three stories or three and a half?
Three, it would be, yeah, certainly, no, three.
Three, okay.
Could I just seek clarification from our board engineer in regards to how one calculates a story if you've got partially exposed first story? Is that, is that done on a circumference basis around?
So the way I like to think of it is if you have a, a house that's a rectangle, and you unfold it, so now you have the four sides of the basement, and then you draw your, your line of where, where grade is. And if more than 50% of that is below it, then that's not a story. If more than 50% is above it, then it is a story. Like, you know, that's, that's what I like to compare it to, is like unfolding it and looking at it, who would shade it in? Yes, that would be a calculation that would have to be done by the engineer during the time of when they're submitting permits for building application.
So that analysis has not been done...
It has not.
For this...
It has not. Other than that, we don't have...
So you're taking a protective, proactive approach, agreeing that that's not going to conform?
Absolutely, yeah.
And again, Mr. Fantina, your testimony was, you do think it can potentially conform, but just in the case that it doesn't.
With regard to stories?
With regard to stories, yeah.
I, I think with stories, it can, yes. That's my impression, yes, yes. With height, I don't think so, no. With, with heat feed, I don't think it can. Height fill analysis will be provided, cotton fill analysis, we'll certainly provide that. Number 13, I should probably clarify. We do show a proposed garage on lot 1. We had shown a two-car garage. Fred, why don't you jump in on that for me?
So it was originally on the plans when we put the application together. We realized it probably doesn't make a lot of sense to put the garage there. It's not known how long that house will stay in place, and as I indicated, really, the spirit of your ordinance is to keep too many cars and so forth from being visible from the street. Given the location of this particular house, that's really not a concern. And honestly, it's been this way for decades without having any kind of detriment to your zone plan or your zoning ordinance. For that reason, we're asking for relief from that modification, or from that condition. If, if the board feels strongly about keeping it, that's, we'd be willing to reconsider that request. But at this point, we'd like the board's feedback on it, and if the board's so inclined, we'd like to have that condition removed.
So where it's drawn on the map there?
Hypothetical.
Center bottom?
Yeah, we, we had shown a, a new garage here, yeah.
Okay, that's where you're proposing to...
We were going to put it in, but between when we submitted the plans and tonight, we've made the decision to request that that...
And that's at the existing house on the property?
Existing house.
The new house, is that going to have a garage?
The new house will have a two-car garage built into it, yes, absolutely.
Yeah. That's exactly what I thought when I was reading it.
Mr. Fantina, what is the square footage of the garage? How much impervious coverage are we saving by not putting it in?
It's not, it's not tremendous. I think I put a box there, about 22 by 22 or something of that nature.
And I'm sorry, did you, did you make a comment that that maybe that house might move?
It's, Mr. Nagarkar can touch base on this. It's, you want to describe the house to the board for starters?
We're in the house of, you know, building development, right?
Come over, come over, come over the microphone, just.
We are in the business of building development, so it's, it's old property. At some point, we would want to redevelop and, and it's just, you know, it's a business decision, but in, in a few years, once we develop the, the property in the front and the property in the rear, we would like to put a nice house back there at some point.
So it's a 100-year-old house with balloon framing and masonite walls and chiplaff and all that good stuff that's in there? Pretty old?
Yeah, it's, it's not the nicest home, yeah.
I, I can't testify, but you can confirm that the, it seems to have, it seems to have many additions over the years type of houses.
Modifications?
Yeah.
And is someone living there now?
Yeah, we have a tenant, and, and...
That's a rental property?
It's a rental property, but, you know, it's a cash flow thing. Once you develop, you move on to the next one. So at some point, hopefully in the next two to three years, we'll be, you know, hopefully, we won't need any variances at that point.
Be back before us again.
Have you thought about where you'd site this new structure?
No, we haven't gone that far, but there is, you know, I, there's plenty of room to put a building, there's plenty of building envelope. Sorry, my partner is more of the construction, I'm the more legal and...
About three and a half acres there in that second, in that second area?
We got, we got a lot of that.
Yeah, you got a lot.
Anything outside this would be more conforming than this now.
Yeah, yeah.
Just for the record, the reason the construction partner's not here is he's ill this evening, that's all.
He did the right thing. Appreciate that. Tell him we appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Fantina, we'll go back to the report.
Okay. As far as utilities are concerned, as far as the sewer capacity, it's my understanding... As far as utilities are concerned, as far as the sewer capacity, it's my understanding that for a single lot, or in this case, for a single subdivision of one new lot, that's not really applicable, and the New Jersey American will provide sewer for, for this property. The owners have had contacts with New Jersey American, and they said that they could provide sewer to this new house.
So sewer's in the street already on Old, on Old Forge?
It is, yes.
There's piping there? How many bedrooms in the house?
That decision hasn't been made, I don't think.
On the, on the new home?
Well, the existing home, you have sewer.
No, it's the home that's septic.
The septic, yeah, okay.
But the future home, three bedrooms, four bedrooms?
The new home will have four, maybe five.
Okay.
The existing house on Lot, in front, that's on the sewer, you know, that's on, on sanitation.
On Lot 1.01?
Right, the neighboring property. So we'll certainly show, there's some additional information they're requesting regarding location of water main, where the proposed electric cable will come in, that sort of thing. We have no objection to that. Then items eighteen to twenty-two, I think fairly standard requests regarding stormwater management, all of which will be handled at the time of building permit application. I don't see anything here that we have, take any objection to or would have any trouble complying with.
I think, Mr. Fantina, my, my main question related to that, for comments eighteen through twenty-two, have you had a chance to review the township code? And that would be, you know, required during your lot grading review? And in your professional opinion, will the lot be developed to meet those standards to infiltrate the four inches over the increase in impervious coverage, both on the existing lot and, and the new house that you're developing?
I certainly believe so. Obviously, I can't say for sure until we do the soil borings, but we can always make it work. If we find something, if we find high water table, we can make the driveway a shallower and bigger.
A shallower infiltration system instead of a standard.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Number twenty-three deals with an environmental impact statement, and I'll simply say, in, in regard to the bullet points here, that we have received an LOI for the wetlands, as I said. I think I've described the, the critical areas, measures that will be employed during the planning and construction to mitigate the impact of this project. We've already mentioned some of them, which would be, you know, removing a lot of the impervious coverage, that existing driveway. Obviously, full, full, fully implemented solar and sediment control plan, and all the usual nine yards that are done in construction in this area. Alternatives to the proposed plan, I, I think we've discussed it, but it's, it's coming in off, off Dogwood, which we all felt really wasn't viable, and we gave it a very, kind of old college try, and we talked to the board about it, but we think this is the best plan there is. Rest of the comments are simply just the approvals that we need, and obviously, those, we need to get those approvals.
So I'm sorry, you said you have the LOI?
We do.
And have, have you seen it?
I have not seen it, no. It was not submitted as part of the package.
We can, we could certainly supply it as a condition of approval, that's not a problem. It was not in the original package. Honestly, I don't remember, we might not have had it at the time, I just don't recall.
That's correct, correct.
Is that right? Yeah, that's what I thought.
They've been awfully slow lately, the DEP issuing them, so it doesn't surprise me.
I'd like to make sure that it gets in your hands, so you can see that, thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I also would ask that we like to, with a copy of the actual LOI permit, I would like to see a copy of the stamped plan, make sure it's consistent with, you know, what you're showing us, and there's no, no accidental changes.
That's fine.
Mr. Fantina, before we go into Ms. Lahany's report, I just want to raise an issue, and she would be the appropriate person to raise it with.
If we can just go back to the, to your report, is there anything that you can't comply with that stipulates of the whole?
No. There was the question about the driveway being in a critical area, the driveway for the new home. Mr. Fantina just testified that we may actually still nick the critical areas. As I'm looking at the ordinance that's cited in the, in both of your reports, it speaks to parking areas, not to driveways. And I looked at the variety of sections of the ordinance, and those do seem to be distinguished as two separate things in Long Hill. So I certainly have no objection to, and would request that variance if you think it's safer to do it that way. But otherwise, I would argue, and we can go through if you wish, that it's not required because it simply doesn't, the driveway section doesn't fall under that ordinance. The parking area does. That's nowhere near the critical site. I just wanted to raise that issue now, we can discuss it to whatever degree you wish to discuss it.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, that's a, that's a good point. I think in other applications that have been before this board, we have interpreted driveways, you know, accessways as being a disturbance in the critical areas that fell under this ordinance, so I think for safety, you should apply for the variance.
Then we would request that ord, that variance as well.
Okay.
Right, sorry, not my expertise, but is there, like, Henry mentioned earlier, there's like a fifteen-hundred square feet that...
Separate, there's a separate ordinance covering that, and that's what we're dealing with. Yep, yep.
Before you go into my report, I just want to go through all the variances, just so, just before we start doing proof. So you still need the side yard variance for proposed Lot 1.02, and it would be essentially sixty, what do we say, sixty-six?
Six and a half.
Six-six and a half. And then for proposed Lot 1.02, you would need a height, a C height variance for going less than ten percent above the thirty-five foot maximum to thirty-eight and a half.
Right.
You would need a height on, in 1.02, the proposed house, in stories, you're going to three, where two and a half is, maximum is permitted.
Right.
Right. And then there would be no garage on the remaining Lot One, which would trigger a variance, right?
That does trigger a variance, correct.
Okay, and then you need a lot with variance on the remaining Lot One because of the Old Forge. And then the final one would be the critical areas for the driveway on Lot 1.02 because of its nicking of the steep slopes.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, and so then, the other question I have, and this is, this is, whatever, it's semantics, I think, but if you were to provide the driveway off of Dogwood, you would probably still need a lot with variance.
I don't believe so. Mr. Fantina, wouldn't it? For, for, on which?
For, for the remaining Lot One.
Well, that's a very good question.
It's, it's got plenty of frontage on the, on the paper street.
Yeah.
But Lot width is only for improved.
If it's only unapproved, then that would be true.
Well, I don't...
No? If it's only approved.
I don't think it would be true, because we wouldn't be improving that much of Dogwood terrace. Because, you see, the, the wetlands and transit trains come out to this point, so unless we improved out to here, which we wouldn't be doing.
Right, so you'd still, I'm sorry, so you would still need that variance. Okay, thank you.
Because you're going into the wetlands, right?
No, sorry, because the way Lot width is measured, even though you could potentially consider Dogwood a front yard, Lot width is, the way the ordinance is written, it's only on improved streets, and so Dogwood is not improved.
Right.
So it would always still be calculated on Old Forge. So it would be, you know, if it's twenty-five feet here, it would be twenty-five feet there.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. With, with that all being said, as far as going through your report, you have a number of planning comments, but I think that we've already touched on all.
I, I think so, too.
Especially since I'm not a planner.
I, I think you've answered all my questions, I just, you know, perhaps for the record, you want to put in proofs for the, the variances that you need?
Yeah, I'll, well, not by testimony, but I will make the arguments for those in just a moment. I'm just going through the list again that you just went through to make sure that we have them all covered at this point. So primarily is the lot frontage variance. We do now have the front yard setback for Dogwood, sixty-six and a half rather than seventy-five. Request for height variance, both as to not more than ten percent over the thirty-five permitted, and three stories as opposed to two and a half. Driveway in a critical area, if in fact that turns out to be the case.
Sorry, setback sixty-six and a half or sixty-eight and a half?
Sixty-six and a half. And I know I missed one, and I'm trying to think of one.
Sorry, the critical area? Did you get that one?
Driveway in the critical area.
Okay, Lot width, no garage?
No, variance to no garage, yes, thank you.
Six.
Which is only for the remainder Lot, Lot One. There will be a two-car garage in the new lot.
Thank you.
Then I have no further questions from Mr. Fantina at this time.
Any members of the board have any additional questions?
Well, since, I do, Mr. Chairman. Since part of the proof is effect or impact to nearby properties, could you just point out where other structures are? I always get disturbed when I don't have plans that really...
Yeah, certainly.
...show where adjacent structures are.
The, the adjacent structure, if you will, is the one in front of us, okay? And obviously, they share a driveway, so that, that one's pretty obvious, that one's right here.
Okay.
Nothing else is really adjacent to us, because...
What about to the north of Dogwood, the paper street? Is there a structure right on?
The, the house, like you, yes.
Okay. A, a, well, essentially, a line pretty much where you're proposing that structure?
More or less, I would say, yes.
Same depth, the same depth off of Old Forge?
That's what I'm asking, you know, how far off of Old Forge?
Do you have it on your key map?
We don't have the key map showing, showing those structures.
Yeah, it's hard to see that arrow, because there's...
Like here and here, this house looks like it's closer. Hangler.
Aerials are tricky with this area because it's so heavily wooded.
I know. Well, it's when you actually see the aerial. It's nice when it's in the winter. Too many trees in this town.
If you look in the photos that were submitted with the application, you'll see that there's no way that you and I could walk down the street and find West Dogwood.
Well, that, that's absolutely true.
Absolutely true.
Yeah.
The only way you'd do it is, is look across the street where, where Dogwood continues across.
Yes, yes. But it, there, there are, there's no curbing on the east side of the street that would indicate where the street might ultimately be. It just doesn't, it's just jungle.
So the likelihood of Dogwood ever getting to be an improved street is...
Well, actually, there, there is a perpetual plan to build a bicycle trail on West Dogwood to connect on the north side of Long Hill, all the way from one end of town to the other. That was attempted a few years ago by the Township Committee, they went after a grant and, and didn't get it, and wound up pricing it out of the realm of possibility. So I think the West Dogwood bicycle connection is dead, and that would be the only driver that I know of to develop that street, because of the fact that it winds up in wetland and has to cross a drainage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board?
Just a quick one. Could you just touch on the grades coming into the property from Old Forge? You have two driveways. The sheet I have shows five percent with a break at the right-of-way line, and then switching to a twelve percent slope down the driveway.
That, that is correct.
What is, what is the length of the five percent before it switches to the twelve?
Property to the south, property to the north.
And to add to that question, is the grade of the proposed driveway more or less than the grade of the existing?
Answer the first question, it's five percent for about twenty feet.
Okay.
And to answer the second question, it's less deep than the existing driveways.
Thank you.
So there won't be a peak coming out of the driveway at the right-of-way?
No, no.
With twelve percent?
We're, we're pretty careful with that.
It doesn't look, okay.
No.
Thank you.
I just have one additional question, and it relates to where the three, potential three-story comes from. The property slopes downward from west to east and from south to north, right? So the exposed areas would then be on, on where you're highlighting, right?
Right, this area, this area would potentially and probably be a walkout basement, that in this...
Yeah, okay, all right. But from, from Old Forge...
Yeah, from Old Forge, you would never see a...
Okay, that, that was my question.
No.
And I, I agree with that as well. From, from Old Forge, it would look like a two-story house. From, if you were walking on remaining Lot One behind it, that's where you're going to see it.
Right, yeah, and that makes sense for the...
Woods back there, I don't know that it's visible from any other property.
Probably not, given the distance, yeah.
The wood, the distance and the woods, yes.
It's the quirk in your ordinance, and I, I know this board doesn't deal with it as often as Board of Adjustments, but it's...
I'm sure you do see it.
It would be a different issue if these were fifty-foot lots, yeah.
Or if it's sloped for the front.
Right, right.
Very different.
Any other questions from board members? Are there any questions from the public for the engineer? Just questions about the engineering presentation at this point.
I'm the owner of sixty-one Old Ford Road, Megan James, and...
Come on up to the microphone.
Don't worry, we don't bite.
Can you just name an address again?
Yes, sir, Megan James, sixty-one Old Ford Road. Yes, I'm the, I'm the other dwelling, so...
Please use the microphone, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my question is, since there isn't a plan, it sounds like there's plans for the first dwelling on 1.02, but not at the existing dwelling at one. Will there be a height variance? Is there any height variance request there? Will that be the same?
So we're not proposing, at this time, we're not proposing to actually do anything with the existing home yet.
Okay, and will the...
So that determination would have to be made at the time, if it were replaced, whether the slopes would require it under the same ordinance or not.
Would there be further subdivision back there?
It's theoretically possible, but given all the wetlands, as you can see, it's...
Very good. That was my only question with that. I haven't been able to see the drawings that were, so, and then the three, so it's exposed three-story from the south.
The three-story exposure would be mainly in this area. Obviously, this is your house, but the lowest area, I think, here, if there was a walkout, it would be in the back or on the side, opposite of that.
Mr. Fantina, from her home's perspective, would it largely, would generally speaking, appear to be a two-story, as it will from Old Forge?
Yes, it would, because that's the higher side of the house.
Mr. Fantina, what would her vantage be of the house? Is that the garage on the side?
Uh, that would, yeah, she's in the garage, she's also, her first floor is probably fifteen feet higher than the first floor of this house.
Okay. She was sitting above that house.
Yeah, twelve, twelve, twelve feet, I'm sorry.
Those are my questions.
Thank you.
I have just one more question. When that driveway is removed, what will be done in regards to restoration?
That area, we, we pull out the, the driveway stone and that sort of thing, topsoil brought in, and the area is seeded and stabilized.
Gotcha. And you'd mentioned, so then, what would be the, maybe I missed, so there is a request then for an easement back there for utilities, or is that going to be addressed?
The existing easement covers both the driveway, the ingress egress, and the two utilities, water and overhead electric.
So you would keep, keep the same easement, but make improved, or take out the driveway?
Correct, right, and, and...
Not the entire driveway, because...
Well, just the part that's, that's affecting Lot One, right?
Gotcha.
But it's a common driver.
Gotcha.
So that dark shaded area on that is what would come out?
That's correct.
Right behind the house, leading all the way to the house in the back.
Yeah, no, you're not taking out their driveway.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And.
I think there'd be a little bit of a problem. Got it.
You might have a problem with the neighbor.
And what would be typical, and I think that's our understanding as Ms. James is, and you could certainly include this as a condition of approval, that a formal agreement dealing with the utilities in that easement be reached between us and be recorded with the county clerk?
Correct.
Or we could move even with the utilities, if necessary.
Actually, I suppose the condition would be phrased that if we were not able to reach an agreement with Ms. James, we would be required to do so.
What material are the new driveways? I don't see it on the plans anywhere.
We hadn't made that decision. Frankly, at this slope, they would have to be paved. I wouldn't feel comfortable with stone driveways at that steepness.
Okay.
When you say stone, you're talking block, not quarter stone?
No, I'm saying they would have to be paved.
If there are no other questions, I'm going to close off the public comments, or public questions, and I'm going to close off the board questions. If there are no others, fine, done. Mr. Zelli, do you have anyone else you'd like to have testify?
No further witnesses, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right then. At this point, we will entertain comments from the public on any subject related to this application. Seeing none. I'll ask you, Mr. Zelli, would like to summarize.
Thank you, yes, thank you. We'll go through the variances one more time, and then I'll touch on the positive and negative criterion. So we're seeking lot frontage variance for 25 feet instead of the, I don't have them out right in front of me, instead of the required amount because of the flaglot situation. A 66.5-foot front yard to Dogwood, because it has to go to the right-of-way, it would be 75 feet as required from the lot line. Height variance for 38.5 feet or less in terms of height footage and for three stories. Again, it would have to fall within the 10% as to the height footage for jurisdiction of this board. Driveway in a critical area in case that turns out to be the case, since we're not exactly sure. And technically, we do need a variance if the board is inclined to waive the prior condition for a two-car garage for the remainder lot. That would trigger the need for variance for not having a two-car garage associated with that lot. So other than the last variance, we're dealing here with a situation where it's really a hardship situation. Lawfully existing conditions of the property, especially the topography, obviously, and the critical areas as well, just makes a lot more sense to take it as a flaglot off of Old Forge. Instead of trying to improve part of Dogwood solely for this one lot, in addition to the obvious financial and logistical hardship, it just doesn't really accomplish anything from a planning perspective. As Ms. Lahaney pointed out, we would actually still need a lot with frontage variance. Even if we took it off of Dogwood, it would be kind of different for the reasons, but we would have to improve the entire street in order to avoid that. Clearly, that would be a hardship on the applicant to have to do that for a single lot. But from a general perspective, it just makes more sense to do it this way. Your ordinance does not prohibit flaglots. You just don't happen to have a specific flaglot section like other towns do, or some other towns do. And typically, what happens with those is what we're proposing here would just be covered by that particular ordinance, and it would provide for a flag stem as we're proposing. So it's certainly nothing that's uncommon in the general scheme. It just, as I said, your township just doesn't happen to have that type of ordinance in place. So technically, it's not permitted, so that's why we need the variance. Negative criterion, there's no detriment that we can see. There is precedent in the neighborhood for flaglot situations. If you look around, it's certainly not unheard of in this town. And you're just ending up with one additional home on what's considerably oversized lot. So there's no perceived harm to your zoning plan or to your zoning ordinance or to the public in general. So we suggest the positive and negative criterion are both satisfied for these variances. The lack of a garage, honestly, that's really just up to the board. The benefit to not having it would be the lack of impervious coverage that it presents. As Mr. Fantina indicated, that's not a huge amount of impervious coverage. If the board has strong feelings on it, we would withdraw that request. But at this point, since we've not experienced any hardship associated with them not being there, with it not being there for the past several decades, we propose that it's really not necessary and would not harm anything by not being there. So we thank you very much for hearing us this evening, for your patience, and we would appreciate a positive vote.
Do any of the board professionals have any comments that you'd like to add to that summary?
I do not.
I do not.
In that case, we'll start to deliberate, and this time, we'll go east to west.
Mr. Chair, do you want to have the board members address the garage issue as part of their deliberations? And we can figure out where the board's going?
Yes, let's address garage during the deliberation.
Okay.
East to west, am I east?
That's you.
Well, first of all, thank you. I thought you provided a very nice, organized application. I was under the impression that certain things weren't in, but with regards to the wetlands, so I appreciate. Ultimately, those were provided. Listen, this is one of the marquee streets in our township. And with certainly my support, and I think others might support it as well, you will have the obligation of being a good steward of this property because that street's beautiful, and we'd like to see it stay that way. So, thank you.
Because we don't have a real, first of all, let me start with, thank you very much for being here tonight and giving the presentation. Thank you to your colleague for not coming in when he's not feeling well. I do appreciate, I wish other people would do the same. And thank you for the presentation of the material. I guess my one area of concern is the side or the front setback off of Dogwood because it seems like you have areas to shape the building that would make it conform, but I don't know what that would look like across the front. Are we talking a nine-foot skinnier house, but nine feet deeper? To fit on the property without getting a variance? I mean, you almost made it by moving the house, so it seems like there is some flexibility there. Maybe that's something someone else would like to also opine on, but if that could be changed, I'd like to try and fit within the confines of the space.
I think the only concern is if we move it further, closer to the flaglot stem, just, you know.
But you can expand forward towards Old Forge. You have space in the front of the property to kind of come forward, and you have space in the back to come back. So we're talking nine feet across. My calc was right, 66 and a half and 75 is the ass, so it's even less than that, it's eight and a half feet.
Yes, so if we want to move further, eight and a half feet from Dogwood, then it gets too close to the flag stem.
I understand that. I'm not trying to get closer to the flag stem.
You're suggesting making an hour home?
Changing the shape, changing the shape.
Changing the orientation of the house?
Yeah, instead of making a longer rectangle like I saw in the picture, kind of square it out a little bit and make up the difference on the front side or back side.
From curb appeal perspective, it won't look very nice, because this is.
I don't have a drawing.
Yeah, but conforming with the rest of the homes on the street, they're all facing in that direction.
So that's just the one, that would be my comment with regards to the garage on the back lot, remaining lot. I don't see, needn't have put it there if you're going to build something later unless you're going to add a house to the new garage that you build there. That's all from me.
Yeah, thank you, very well done presentation. And I really don't see any issues with anything that you presented tonight. And in regard to the two-car garage, I don't see the need for that at this point.
Thank you.
Well, I'll echo everybody else's sentiment. Nice, well-presented, nice and concise application, which is always nice to see. With respect to the garage, sooner or later, you're going to tear down that existing house. The rental house is back there, and it's going to have to have a garage. So I don't think it's, I think that issue is really moot, as far as I'm concerned. And everything else is fine with me.
Thank you.
I agree, and again, echoing what everyone else said, thank you for your application. One thing you didn't testify to was on your vicinity map, I just counted four flaglots on your map.
They're definitely around.
So they're definitely in there, so it's not a major concern. And I agree with what everybody said about the garage. I think eventually the garage will be built, so I don't have a problem with it for now.
Yep, great application. I also noticed that there was four others, other flaglots in the vicinity. So you're kind of keeping with what's going on in the neighborhood already. I think it's going to be a nice addition to a beautiful neighborhood that already exists. And I don't have a problem with the application. Thank you.
Well, Mr. File said the words that I didn't intend to say, and that is tear down the existing house. But that's inevitable.
Yeah.
And at that, and so there, I don't see any point in enforcing the garage issue right now. With regard to all the discussion about setbacks from Dogwood, I don't believe there's an issue there. Dogwood doesn't exist, there's no vestige of it ever existing in the past or in the future. It's heavily wooded, will never be developed, at least not within our viewpoint at this time. And so I am not at all concerned about any excuse to reduce the setbacks. And in fact, there may not even be a setback issue in some cases with regard to Dogwood. And I echo the other board members' gratitude for you presenting this crisply.
Thank you.
Amanda?
I don't think I need to repeat all the variances, believe, again, but the application would be subject to all the conditions set forth in the board professionals' memos and anything else that was stipulated to on the record. The amendment was with the LOI and the stamp plan and the formal utility agreement will be, I guess, submitted to the board attorney or township attorney. I think that was it. So this would be a majority vote, since it is not a D variance because it's before the planning board. And we would be voting with no garage, so no garage would be proposed.
Can I have a motion to adopt a resolution along those lines?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. File?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Committee Man Ray?
Yes.
Committeeman Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Sandow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Nice job, yes.
Thank you all, have a very wonderful evening. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the residents for coming in.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be inspecting.
Good luck with the area.
We have a couple of more matters on the agenda tonight. And at this point, we have a choice, gentlemen. And that is, we can either get through the agenda items in a hurry, or we can take a break.
I'd like to formally thank the neighbors for coming in. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. And the neighbors that didn't show up.
I'll repeat my question. We can either get through the last agenda item in a hurry, or we can take a break. What would you prefer?
I'm good for trucking it. Hurry, forge ahead.
Okay, forge ahead. The next item on the agenda is minutes, which were not distributed?
Correct, no minutes tonight.
Next time.
Next time.
And the last item on the agenda is a discussion of the zoning board's report. Did anyone get a chance to read that closely and parse it mentally? If not, the professionals and I will take a shot at doing that and bring a suggestion as to how to tackle it to our next meeting.
I did, I did read it. I just, I sent one question back to Deborah, and I think to Liz as well.
Yes.
And that was the extent of the variances that were approved and whether the applicant changed their plans to be more conforming during the process.
I would say no. Happening ever. I think what happened tonight where they tried to make it more conforming was unusual. That's the first time I've really ever seen that, I mean, here.
I was surprised that every variance was approved, you know, which I thought was unusual, you know, unless they were modified, you know, to become more conforming during the process.
I think a lot of the lots were so undersized and the bulk requirements for that parcel were so out of whack with what that building was.
Well, that's what I'd like to hear more about, especially if our, you know, if the direction then is to use that history to say, we've got to do, here's what we need to do for smaller lots. Rather than just arbitrarily pick a number, but, you know, based on the experience with the zoning board. Are we talking about, you know, 10% or 5%? Or, you know, a couple hundred square feet here or there, you know?
Well, I think a lot of last year, too, the boards, the zoning boards saw a lot of existing non-conforming conditions when it came primarily to impervious coverage.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there's a lot of the small, people adding pools, patios, especially in the time of COVID. And they're already over on these smaller lots with their impervious coverage, so.
Yeah, yeah, which is a big issue because of flooding.
Of course.
Okay, well, thanks for that. That was my only comment, but I did, I did read it.
Thank you. There are, if you do read it in the near future, there are a few items that require master plan adjustment in order to drive corrections in the ordinance. But more than half of the suggestions there are ordinance-only, typically in areas that are not part of the master plan. And as I said, I'm going to ask the board professionals to work with me to parse that list into those items that we should tackle on our own in the ordinance area and those that go to the master plan. And we'll have that for the next meeting, along with the minutes.
Yes. Sorry, I was away for a couple days.
Does anyone have anything else they would like to bring to this meeting? Seeing none.
Other than we're on track for our next meeting to discuss the recommendations for the land use element.
Okay, the, there is, there is a hearing scheduled at the next meeting, and what we will do is we will confine that hearing to two hours or less and then give you the last hour for.
Do we think it's going to be about the same length as this one? Because this was very efficient.
I don't, I cannot judge that until I hear the testimony, but.
Which one is it?
And then, and then from then on, we've only got one additional application, and then the summer is devoted to the master plan.
We'll get our sunscreen on.
Unless something else comes in. But right now, speaking of which, can we get a, can we get a new schedule? Deborah, the last one I have is January.
No, I send out one after that, but yes, absolutely.
Would you distribute whatever you can?
Yes. You mean my application status that I do?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do any of our professionals have anything to say tonight?
I do not.
You'd rather go home?
No, we'd rather stay here.
I thought you all did an excellent job on this application. I mean, you guys, you nailed it for this application, which was very helpful, so thank you.
But this was, that was a unique one. Listen, I had quite a few conversations. Wait a minute.
Thank you.
In two minutes, we're either going to take a break or we're going to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So can I have a motion for one or the other?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Making adjournments.